Okay. It is Wednesday, April 21st at 6:30 and we will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please note this meeting will be open to the public, however, all social distancing guidelines must be adhered to. Public comments will be addressed at the discretion of the Chair. A recording of the meeting will be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Video On Demand website at HTTPS colon slash slash WB dash cam dot org slash VOD slash. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is to reorganize the Board. It's been tradition that at the first meeting after the election, we reorganize and typically everyone moves up one role except for me. I will move back down to clerk. So is there a motion for a Chairman?
I'm Anthony. That wasn't very official sounding. I apologize.
That's all right. We have a motion for Anthony to be Chairman. I would second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And now a motion for a Vice Chair?
I'll make the motion to appoint Maria Marcher.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, we don't need to say our names anymore because we're live. Okay.
Look at that.
And lastly, a motion for clerk. That would be me.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on the list is to review the Board of Selectmen rule and assign. We have the surges signatory contracts, parking clerk, road opening permit, and application signatory. So do we have a motion to assign these? Or is there any discussion regarding them?
Do they want preference over it?
I think the way we did it in June, July, when we met was I was the parking clerk. I know Anthony was the road opening permit. Denise was surges.
Okay.
Does that change with our roles? So then I would then be road opening permit. Denise would be parking clerk and Anthony would be surges.
I'd be fine with that.
In my industry, we've never like done it systematically like that before, switch it off.
Okay.
But that way we all have experience in all roles and all authorities.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We're getting faster at this. Look at that.
We are. So for the record, Mary is road opening clerk.
Yes.
Or signatory, I apologize. Anthony surges signatory and I am parking clerk. Okay. Next on the agenda is to revote on fiscal year '22 proposed library budget and fiscal year '22 operating budget. I will recuse myself from any discussion regarding the library budget.
Yep. So thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So just real quickly, everybody did a level funded budget this year, including the library. However, for the library to receive state aid, they have to hit a certain formulaic-based metric. And their library budget is $59 short of that metric on a three-year rolling average. And just so you're aware, the state aid from the state this year for library will be $13,779. So it would be silly to not appropriate $59 to the library to pick up $13,700. So as a result, I will ask that the Selectmen revoke the library budget, which in this case here, the new amount would be $479,205. You will see that in the Excel spreadsheet that I provided. And if the Board is in favor of doing that, I would ask for two votes, which is for the library budget of $479,205 and then to revoke the budget in its aggregate, which is $37,65742.
So I would recuse myself from the first vote, but I can participate in the second vote.
Is there a motion to approve the law?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I forgot that you were, I couldn't figure out why you weren't saying anything. I apologize.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the whole budget.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a vote on the articles to be placed on the warrant for the annual town meeting.
There is D. Volontiff.
Oh, I apologize.
I apologize. Can I mention something before you do that?
Sure.
I'm going to be assigned the road opening permit application, but that does not interfere with Sean's salary on the DPW at all. Just wanted to make sure that was noted in the notes. Thank you.
Okay. Vote on TIF agreement between D. Bartolo Development and the town of West Bridgewater. David, you want to give us a summary?
Yep. So the Board of Selectmen had authorized me to negotiate with the developer a couple of months ago. We have come to the agreement on a TIF agreement, tax incentive finance program, that will have to need town meeting approval. The agreement was that we would provide for him to do all of the road improvements, new lights at Crescent Street and Lincoln. He will purchase property and align Lincoln and Crescent so it becomes a four-way intersection. Route 106, Crescent Street, Lincoln Street will get additional lanes. There will be a new sidewalk on Route 106 and there will be a new sidewalk that will run the duration of 106 all the way down Lincoln Street to the corner of South Elm, which will be really nice because it'll tie in our athletic complex when and if it's built. That estimate came in about 4.7 million. The Board agreed that we would do $2.2 million through a tax program. So basically, it's going to cost us, you know, we're going to get 60 cents on the dollar, which is great. And then also a couple hundred thousand dollars, $275,000 that he will pay as part of the TIF upfront for all of our legal fees, appraisal costs, engineering costs, so we can have an engineer oversee the project as well. So that totals 2.475 million. So through this agreement, we will rebate him on his taxes, which is estimated at this point, his incremental taxes would go up about $760,000 per year. The TIF agreement requires a minimum of five years. So what we are going to do is we are proposing a seven-year TIF agreement. We are going to expect that we will actually pay it back within five to six years. And the TIF agreement is going to stipulate to the fact that once that $2,475 is achieved, that the TIF agreement becomes null and void at that point. I've met with the developer multiple times. Anthony's been with me representing the Board. We've had town council involved and I met with or spoke to her on the phone multiple times with our liaison with the state, including the Director of this agency. They've never done this before, meaning that usually you do say a seven-year TIF and it's just seven years. In this case, it'll be a seven-year and then whenever we get to that number, it just gets null and void. So she expects it to be fine. It does have to pass state council, but we have to agree to it, sign it, send it to them, they'll review it. But that's what will be before town meeting. There is a spreadsheet as part of the TIF agreement. You will see that what we're going to propose is that we will do a 60% exemption the first three years and then we will accelerate to a 100% exemption, which we believe is going to allow us in year five to year six to achieve that $2 million. It's silly because that spreadsheet shows the following. Our current tax rate, the assumed estimated value of completion, and the current valuation, the difference of those two is that incremental difference of $27 million. We have no way of knowing in years two, three, four, and five what those numbers will be. But this is how the state wants to do it, so that way they can see what the value would be based on today's numbers. So you will see that if we use those numbers, that over seven years, we would achieve $4 million, which indicates that it will not go a full seven years. Obviously, the value might come in a little bit higher or a little bit lower, and that's why some of those variables are in place. So I would ask initially for you to approve the TIF agreement as presented. However, it will be subject to final review of town council and state council in case they have to change any of the verbiage. Obviously, they can't change anything substantive. And as part of that TIF agreement, there is also a road layout plan. You will see that there's a sketch right under there in color. That is what the new layout of the road will look like. There is also some indication of some takings. They may not be all indicative at this point. At your next meeting, we will have some legal descriptions that you will have to vote on and accept. But for the purposes tonight, to get the process started, I will ask you to approve the TIF agreement, allowing for those changes, and also to approve the road improvement plan, at least at this point, as presented. But I will tell you, you'll have a second one to vote on once we fine tune the easements.
David, I have, this is the first time I've seen this spreadsheet, so I just have a question. If it's a total of 4.4 million and he is, the town's paying, what, 2.4 million? Why is the exemption total 4.4?
So we want to try to accelerate the process. We don't know how many years we're going to need the TIF agreement for, but it has to be a minimum of five.
Okay.
So that's why we have lower percentages in the first couple of years. And our hope is, is that we're going to hit 2.475 in the fifth year.
Okay.
But this is assuming a $33 million valuation. And let's assume that once it's built, the valuation comes in at 30 million. So we would need seven years to get to 2.475. Assuming full valuation of 33 million, we would achieve $4.4 million in seven years. But the contract, the agreement will null and void earlier than that. If you turn to page in your TIF agreement, I think it's A. 7, which is probably going to be page three or four. It'll be bullet point number seven, right before the letter B. It says, quote, "In no event shall the total exemption as provided be in excess of $2,475,000. Once said amount is achieved in the aggregate, this amount will terminate and be considered voided. Once the agreement is voided, the town developer agree the agreement is decertified and that the facility will be subject to full and fair taxation." So we just have to show that, because we have to protect the town, that for whatever reason, if we have a lower assessment of 33 million, we might need the TIF to go out seven years as opposed to five years.
And is the 4.4 million, is any of that interest or these are all hard costs?
This is just the tax rebate through that. So we've agreed that's 2.4, that's all he's going to receive.
Okay. But I'm just curious, when built into the number, there's no, he's not charging us any interest or?
Nope. This is us just agreeing that, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't matter what he does on his end.
Right.
If he wants to charge himself interest, that's great.
Right.
He's getting 2.4 million.
And that's it.
Where he puts that money, how he utilizes it, that's between him and his people.
Okay.
But that's all we're paying for. And we know, because we've seen his quote, we had a quote from our people that it was going to be a minimum of 4 million. He came in at 4.7. So we know it's somewhere north of 4 mil.
Right.
So in any event, we're just getting a really good deal on it.
Okay. And the construction is not the same as what was originally presented to us. I think, if I remember correctly, this proposal includes less land taking over along 106.
That's correct, because there is going to be a double lane in one direction. Well, on 106, it's not going to be as wide as we had originally hoped, because as you go west street towards Route 24, that will be double-laned. Coming into town, that's going to be a single lane plus a turn lane. We had hoped to get two lanes plus a turn lane. But there's, it's because of takings, but it's also, we would have had to actually widen the road in the north side. And not only would that have taken takings, we would have run afoul of that cemetery. And in doing some preliminary work on that, we do not want to get involved in having to take land out of a cemetery.
Okay. So coming off of 24, heading into town, it's going to remain a single lane?
With a turn lane.
With a turn lane. Okay.
So, I mean, people could drive in the turn lane.
Yeah.
They're going to do it.
Right.
And they may not necessarily be turning, because then they're going to come to a set of lights. And then it's going to be a turn lane past that set of lights. But then eventually, you could see as it heads towards Market Basket, that it's not double-laned all the way in that direction, because again, there's conservation land there. And if we had to go through the MEPA process, we would be, we'd eventually get approval, but that might take up 18, 24 months just to get approval through the state and before you could start construction.
Now, what happens if the TIF gets repaid in less than five years?
So that's the magic question. All I know is, is that the state said that it can't and they won't approve it. So that's why originally, I had 100% in the first three years and then dwindling down. But because we ran that risk, we inverted it to make the lower percentages in the first three years. So we will not get to it. But it is, I can't answer the question, because if the agreement is signed and in year four we get to that number, we're going to null and void the contract and the state's going to say, well, you have to do a five-year. I don't know what happens. So to protect ourselves, we've made sure we can't get to that number within five years.
Now, what happens if the repayment takes more than seven?
So if, then what we can do to protect ourselves on that is that I can write a 10-year TIF. My fear is, is because Denise had brought that up, when we go to town meeting, because the developer's fine, developer doesn't care. He knows when it gets to 2.4, it gets shut off.
That's it.
So he said, you can write me a 20-year, he doesn't care. But right now showing a seven-year, you're seeing 4.4 million. And I know that until we have the time to explain it, and this is not easy to explain, until you have time to explain it, if I do a 10-year, this number's going to be six or seven million. And I'm fearful that somebody at town meeting is going to say, this is really six to seven million, even after you explain it and may not fully comprehend it, because they don't do it every day and we do.
Right.
So if the Board wants to protect ourselves even more and say, fine, let's do a 10-year, we'll do 100%, and therefore, we just have to be able to argue at town meeting or explain why that number is really more fictitious than factual. But we could do that.
Couldn't you, David, in, well, I don't want to have to redo the contract, but couldn't you in, you know, in these numbers stipulate 60%, but no more than X dollars?
No.
You can't. It has to be a percent?
Correct. Because when we, when the state approves this, the process will be, assuming town meeting approval on May 17th, I then have to forward everything by the 19th to the state. They have a meeting on June, I think it's the 17th. They approve the exemption percent. They're not worried about whole dollars. The law is, is that that's all you're approving. So technically, all we're supposed to be negotiating is the exemption percent. So normally into most TIFs, somebody says, I want to come in town, I want a tax rebate process, and we negotiate that exemption. In this case, we did a reverse. We said, we want to get to this dollar amount. So we're using the exemptions to get to that dollar amount. That's why I said the state's never seen that before. But that's why we can't put a dollar amount, because they're not approving the dollar amount, they're approving the exemption percent. Sorry, the exemption percent.
Is there a fear that the state would not approve this TIF?
Yes. So we've, I've met with them multiple times and we've got this draft approved, but we had to finalize some language. That language that I just read to you is a language that was just agreed to between the developer, some of us that met with the developer and legal counsel last night. So I've already verbally ran it by them and the Director is on board, but it does have to pass their legal counsel. So there is a chance that that legal counsel might say, we can't do this or we can't do that. That's why in the language of the TIF in the warrant article, it actually says that if the state wants to change some of the language, but doesn't change the basic terms of it, that they're giving us the flexibility to make those changes.
I follow.
If the state came back and said, sorry, you could have a 12-year TIF, I'd have to go back to town meeting, because we have to have an exact number, numerical year in here. But if they come back and say, you know what, we know what you're trying to do, change this language, so we don't want to say null and void, we want to say exhausted. We don't want to say decertified. We want to say termed illegal. Same language. And that's written in the warrant article to give us that flexibility. But there's always a risk.
Okay. And this is one warehouse in the small retail.
So the beauty of this TIF is that it is only on the warehouse. So if he builds that retail right away, we get full and fair immediately. This is only on the large warehouse. If he builds a second warehouse immediately, we get full and fair. This is only on the large warehouse.
I would love to see the street lined up and it widened. I would love to see that area improved.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the TIF subject to review by council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ian.
Aye.
Aye.
And I just want on the record that you're giving me the flexibility that if we have to change some of the language without changing the substance, that's the spirit of the issue.
No material change.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Ian, I need a vote on the road layout too, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Vote on articles to be placed on warrant for annual town meeting. David?
Yep. So I think the easiest way to do this is that I will, like, really, really briefly just go through the articles. You're going to vote, two votes. The first vote is going to be on placing the warrant articles at town meeting. You have the exclusive authority to decide whether something goes on the warrant or not. So I'm going to just quickly say them. Ian, if you have no objection, say nothing. And then if you do and you say, I don't know if I want to, just say hold and we'll go back to it. Assuming no holds, at the end, we'll take one vote to place them all on.
Do you want to bulk together all of the consent articles?
Yep. So the consent articles are one and two. Article three is to set the wages for town officials. Article four is the budget. Article five is the annual exemptions. Article six is for, to allow us to spend chapter 90 funds. Article seven, eight, nine, and 10 are all in reference to CPC funds. Article 11 is our annual web task force state match. Article 12 is for sidewalks out of free cash. Article 13 is to transfer money from a state fund that we receive. Article 14 is free cash for the DPW for a mower. Article 15 is DPW for an F-250. Article 16, again, another capital budget for a police cruiser. Article 17 is for AC units at the town hall offices. Article 18 is for a pickup truck at the school committee. Article 19 is to create a fund to pay for a 200th anniversary party for the town. Article 20 is to borrow money for a new ambulance to replace our old one. Article 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 are all from the water commissioners to use water surplus for either purchasing or paying down debt. Article 27 is the TIF agreement that you just approved. Article 28 is to approve the roadway improvement plan that you just approved. Article 29, we are going to set up a revolving account. As I said, the construction allowance is for 2.2 million, but we're going to have costs for engineering, appraisal, takings. We didn't want the taxpayer to pay that. So he's going to give us that money and we're going to rebate it through the tax incentive program. So he's going to give us the money. I need an account to put the money in. So he's going to give us that money, we're going to put it into this account that you're setting up. It's a revolving account for the Board of Selectmen, and that way, as those bills come in, you will sign the warrant to pay it using that money. And then Article 30 is to accept the roads that you guys voted on to accept at your last meeting.
Any questions on the articles?
No.
So the F-250, Article 15, Article 18, those are replacing older vehicles, no longer in service, or are they adding new vehicles?
Both to replace existing vehicles that will be taken out of service.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve all to be placed on the warrant.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So thank you for that. The next, now you're going to vote on your recommendations. So Article one, Article two are consent. Article three, again, we set the salaries. Article four is the budget, you've already taken that vote. I guess instead of me going through each one, if you have any questions, if you think that you're concerned about approving or recommending any of them, I can certainly answer it for you.
I'll make a motion to recommend all articles.
Is there a second?
One question about the exemptions on the real estate tax. Can those be any higher or is that the maximum amount?
That's the maximum amount.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ratify, okay, do I need to read this for the warrant or is that just part of the package?
That's just the signature page or the?
Just the signature page?
Yeah. Let me just give it a quick look, because I, I rely on the staff to tell me.
It's okay. So I don't think this was part of the red folder for us to sign, so is this what you want us to sign?
So I don't have it in here. So yes, I would say that that must be what has to get signed.
Okay. All right. Wasn't in there?
Yeah, it was in the folder.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. We're all set with that? Do we need a vote on anything else for the articles or we're all set? Okay. Ratify Board of Health request to appoint two additional part-time nurses.
So as you know, our nurse has really been overwhelmed with the work. And so we, we also know that she is going to be seeking retirement soon. So we have solicited two local nurses that will work part-time. They're not part-time employees, they're just going to be on-call for whenever we need them, they will be paid for at least initially out of the state grant money that we receive through the Board of Health. But that way, right now, we will have multiple qualified IRNs to call on for contact tracing and anything else. And you'll recall, at the last meeting, we added $10,000 to the Board of Health budget in case, when the state grant runs out at the end of the year, in case we still need money afterwards. So the Board of Health has recommended them. We've already done a Cory check, we've done the background checks. There's no, see no reason not to ratify their decision. Their names are Claire Marie Rogers Stewart and Michelle Anne Bishinsky.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Claire Rogers Stewart and Michelle Bishinsky.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Declare 2008 Crown Victoria as surplus.
So this was the replacement vehicle last year at town meeting. Excuse me, we bought a, a new truck for the fire department as a chase vehicle. It was to replace this 2008 Crown Victoria with 156,000 miles on it. That truck came in and so now I ask you to declare it a surplus and as Chief Procurement Manager, I will then dispose of the vehicle.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve meeting minutes of February 17th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accept meeting minutes of March 3rd, 2021 for review.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appoint Wendy Adams as the West Bridgewater Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors.
So this is just, this is an annual appointment. OCPC, which is our regional planning office, has multiple planning office, has multiple boards. This is how we do our Meals on Wheels, it comes through them. And so Wendy is a employee here at the Council on Aging. It's a one-year term, it's a reappointment on an annual basis, and so that's what I ask for you to vote.
Certainly.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss Memorial Day ceremony.
So the town clerk chairs the Memorial Day Committee. Last year, unfortunately due to COVID, Memorial Day was canceled, and so she's prepared and ready to move forward, and starting to do something, the planning for that. But she would like to make sure that the Board of Selectmen are on board, that we should hold the ceremony this year. And so she's just making sure that you are comfortable with that versus canceling it, and then she will hold her meeting and, and begin the process of planning for it.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Would it be weather permitting?
Yeah. They, they have a little makeshift tent, and so every once in a while, when it rains, you huddle up.
Oh, great. I don't want to snuggle. No, I think that in-person's a great idea.
I only remember one year when it was a little chilly and windy. Windy, other than that, it was fine.
A few years ago.
Yeah. Okay, this doesn't require a vote, just our opinion?
No, just as long as your general consensus is for me to inform her, excuse me, that, that you're in favor of holding it, I'll inform her tomorrow.
Okay, good. Okay, communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. I don't, do we have anything? Nothing, David? Okay. Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. Any correspondence from the public? No? Okay. We have public comment period, but we have no public. So, town administrators report.
Yeah, so just my weekly COVID-19 update. Excuse me, I will tell the Board very good news. Our numbers had been escalating, and we've been in the twenties, 25, 26. This past Tuesday, on our weekly basis, we only had 10 cases, new cases. So that's a positive, that's half of what it was the week before. So we're certainly finally starting to trend in the right direction. I will show you, that I will share with you, I've placed a map, so that way you could see it. This is the most recent map, according to the DPHs to who is in the red. You can certainly see that we're there, and unfortunately, the south shore is, is more red than not. But we're trending in the right direction. So, so with that said, you know, our numbers are starting to go down. I think everybody is aware, but just in case you didn't know, the J&amp;J vaccine has been halted. I've placed that memo from the Department of Public Health in your, in your brochure packet to see. On a piece of good news, about six weeks ago, I met with, there was me and four other communities, there was five of us. We were frustrated, I think you all know, that the state basically pulled the plug on our ability to be able to have a local vaccination site. We really didn't want our residents driving to Gillette, or Marshfield, or Natick, and I know the Board really felt that same, that same way. So we partnered together and lobbied, and I'm proud to say that this past week is that Bridgewater State University was approved as a regional vaccination site. So it will be open to all state residents. People from West Bridgewater will have to go on the same website, register for that site, but instead of having to drive 45 minutes, now they can drive 15 or 20 minutes. It's anticipated that it'll be up and running in about two weeks. The site has been approved, but as we know, and the reason I mentioned the J&amp;J vaccine, is its supply is still limited. So, we'll have to see how that trickles into that facility, but I do want to tell everybody good news. I know this Board really wanted to see its residents not have to travel far, and we were able to finally get that approval. So that, that was a positive. The other is, is that I placed in front of you a chart that the state has now started to make available based on vaccinations. You can drill down to county, you can drill down to age, ethnicity, and some other criteria. But I think of most important note, is that West Bridgewater, at this point, 36% of our residents have received at least one dose of the vaccine, and 21 and a half percent are fully vaccinated, meaning that they've received both, in where the 14-day period of the J&amp;J, they, they received that one shot. So again, I thought that that was good news, that we're moving in the right direction on that as well. Nothing else really to go over in reference to COVID, and the last thing is just an FYI about the Girl Scouts using the town hall parking lot, the NDFMA that I've already signed off on.
When will the advertising start for the Bridgewater College vaccination site?
As soon as we know we're getting the vaccine.
Okay.
So, we're hoping, we, we were told from the state last week to expect it in two weeks, so that would be next week. I've not seen anything new from Bridgewater State yet, so my guess is that means that they have not been confirmed on when the, that the vaccine is physically coming to them. But as soon as we get it, I know that we're going to start doing some advertising, and we'll be doing it locally here as well.
Great. Any other discussion, comments? No? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.